Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the combined meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Hatfield Finance Committee. It's November 21st. The reason for the first part of our meeting is we're going to be interviewing John Kozmiski, to my left, for the position of Finance Director/Town Accountant. And I just wanted to read what our posting was as far as that position on a go-forward basis that was agreed upon with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen as to what we're looking for for the future of financial leadership. So, "We're looking to hire an individual with demonstrated leadership skills to work with the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, the School Superintendent, and other town employees to identify departmental goals and do financial planning to support each of those." That's something a little different than what we've done in the past when hiring a town accountant. And, of course, that Finance Director will also do financial projections for the town and serve as the Town Accountant, complying with all statutory and bylaw requirements of the position. Works with the Finance Committee to develop a budget each year, and in close cooperation with the Town Treasurer, performs the regular transactional duties such as accounts payable, posting accounts receivable, and monthly reconciliations," which is the traditional accounting position for the cities and towns. So, we're expanding that to also get some Financial Director leadership down the road is the goal. Some of us have met John already. Myself, Betsy, and Diane, and Edwina, and Marlene. Back a couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity to meet with John, ask some questions, and thought that it was important that the rest of the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen and the residents of Hatfield had an opportunity to hear what John had to say and hear about his background. And I guess at that point, I would leave it up to you, John, to introduce yourself, I guess, and perhaps whatever you're comfortable sharing with information. And then that will probably lead to some questions from my colleagues and give the colleagues who haven't met you yet, as well as the townspeople, feel for who you are.
Great.
All right.
Well, without going too far back in history, let me just start with my education, I guess. And I got my undergraduate degree from Stonehill College. And after Stonehill, I went for postgraduate work in accounting at Providence College and sat for the CPA exam at one point, and then went on to an MBA at Boston College, where my concentration was in finance. As far as work career, I spent, at least as far as the municipal side, I started in Rhode Island, worked at a number of larger cities, included cities like Woonsocket, Newport, Central Falls, and I did some work in my hometown at the town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island, and was there for a better part of close to 20 years. And then since, at that point, there was a lot of discussion at the General Assembly to increase the retirement age, and I decided at that point that, gee, maybe with enough years of service and all that stuff, it might be time to, you know, move on a little bit. And I had a situation where my uncle passed away and left me the house in Amherst, which was sorry to see my uncle pass away, but, you know, I had a chance to do a little work and relocate in Amherst, which is where my father and uncle and grandmother all grew up, and they were there for over 100 years. So, I was able to restore the homestead and had some fun doing that for a little while. And all of a sudden, I got bored, and I said to myself, "My gosh, I gotta, you know, I gotta get back into the swing of things and do a little work that I've been doing for years," because I didn't really know how to pound nails all that well, which I found out, and how to do a few of the things on the home front. So, I said, "Well, why not try to do in Massachusetts what I've been doing for years in Rhode Island?" And it wasn't long before I was sending out resumes and managed to catch up with the good people in Palmer. And lo and behold, I landed the job as Town Accountant. And I was happy to do that for, actually, it's been eight years or so since I've been there, and been familiar with Massachusetts ways of doing things that included all of the language at the time that was foreign to me when I came into this situation, like free cash, what's that? I never heard of that one before. Or, you know, some of the other technical terms, Schedule A, gee, I file that with my 1040, but what's that all mean? So, you know, after eight years, I guess I finally figured that out, and, you know, involved with, you know, the tax recap and all that type of reporting that we do with the state that's just as inherent as part of the job. So, I've been doing that in Palmer for some time, and after a while, things begin to get a little redundant. I guess the typical engagement for a Town Accountant oftentimes is usually like a three-year stint. Sometimes it gets extended to five. After about eight, you begin to feel like, well, gee, been there, done that, and it's time, if you want to continue to, you know, be mentally challenged, and if there's a possibility of increased compensation, then you start to look around and see what other opportunities might be available. So, here I am as a result of that, and if there's any questions, I'd certainly be happy to try and answer them.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Did anybody -- Betsy?
John, two things. One is, I think it would be of interest to people to hear what one of your biggest challenges in the town of Palmer was.
Okay. Well, one challenge was we built a brand-new police station that cost us close to $9 million. And that was a state-of-the-art facility, and there was a lot of planning and interaction with the credit rating agency of Moody's and S&amp;P. We also had to work with our financial advisor and a whole host of ducks we had to get in a row for that. But I wouldn't consider that necessarily the biggest one. Probably the biggest one was when we were being considered as a host community for the casino in western Massachusetts. And that involved quite a bit of legwork and planning and worked very closely with the town manager. We had to develop a host-community agreement. Part of that was to negotiate with Mohegan Sun at the time. We had to determine, well, gee, what's in it for the town of Palmer? And we were able to negotiate in that agreement such things as infrastructure improvements with a lot of development in local roads and highways. There were water improvements that were going to be part of that. There were going to be sewer line improvements that were part of that. In addition, we were going to get a new public works facility built as a result of the revenue stream that was going to be generated. Our tax levy was going to almost double over a 10-year period as it was phased in gradually. And that's not even to mention the fact that we were going to be able to get, since this was supposed to be a resort facility, we were going to get additional meals tax money as well as hotel tax money. So, it was a real financial home run for the town. The problem was that there was a non-binding referendum that won a considerable plurality from the local voters. But when it got time to do the real thing and do the actual referendum to get this passed, we lost by eight votes. So, it was really close. And we really felt that although we might not have had the political clout at the State House like Springfield might have had, we felt as though the location would have been really top-notch and really been a good thing for everyone involved. So, it was kind of disappointing in that regard, but it certainly was a terrific experience to be part of that whole process.
Got a second question?
Yeah. Actually, I have like three or four. Something we didn't get to ask you is, what would you consider, from your perspective, I understand you've mostly been on the municipal side, but some of the big differences between municipal accounting and the work a CPA might do at a business?
Okay. Well, first of all, there's two accounting standard boards that are entirely different. If you're in the private sector, you have to deal with a group by the name of FASB, the Financial Accounting Standards Board. And their rules and promulgations and accounting is considerably different. You get into the GASB pronouncements, which is the Governmental Accounting Standard Boards, and these are all regulated by the SEC, by the way. Now, you're into a whole different ballgame, and it conjures up images of fund accounting. You begin to get into things like, well, what's the general fund? What are special revenue funds? What are capital project funds? Trust and agency funds, enterprise funds, I mean, they're all part of it. And the accounting for that is different. Communities pass budgets every year, and usually a good part of your financial report is done on a budgetary basis, or probably closely resembles a cash basis of accounting. You get into the reporting to the state, and you get into a modified accrual basis for accounting. And then you get into enterprise funds, and now all of a sudden, you're on full accrual. So, you can have three different accounting methodologies within the contents of a financial report. And usually, you need to have the, just to be able to make sense out of the whole thing, you like to get a list from whoever pulls this together of the reconciling items that get you from one version to the next. And that sometimes gets confusing to a lot of people that aren't dealing with this every day. But one of the good things that GASB did not all that long ago was to develop the government-wide financial statements, where the focus was much more long-term. So, you'd be seeing such things as your unfunded pension liability and your OPEB liability, other post-employment benefits.
Oh, okay.
So, if you pay health insurance benefits to your retirees, that's an obligation that actually gets paid out over a number of years, and the actuary takes all those future cash flows and discounts them back to a net present value. It ends up showing up on your financial statements. If you're on a cash basis, a budgetary statement, the focus is much more short-term, and you don't even see things like fixed assets or things like your pension liabilities on those. So, sometimes it takes a little thorough review, just as I say, to make sense out of the different methodologies. But they also generally, at the front of it, include a management discussion and an analysis section, which tries in layman's terms to point out the relative standing of all these funds in relation to one another. And it was designed to make it more easily understood by the general public. So, in the course of what you might have a 100-page document, you can read the first five or six pages and get a pretty good idea of what's going on.
So, my question, or one of my questions, is in Palmer, I'm just looking at your resume. You're supervising for finance divisions and I assume employees and et cetera underneath you.
Yes.
Little old town of Hatfield, even though we're going to call it the Finance Director, which I think is a good step, you're kind of the guy doing everything. And I'm just looking for your thoughts on that and, you know, because there's some difficulty in getting all that done in -- anyway, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure if you're talking about a 60-hour work week, but, you know, we, I've had the experience of working in a larger city where I had multiple staff people. Palmer was much more reduced in terms of the labor force. And so, the town accounting work was pretty much my ballgame. I remember early on, when I started in the accounting office, I was hired strictly as Town Accountant. Because there was a provision in their charter that called for Finance Director that could be one of either the Town Accountant or the Assessor or the Collector or the Treasurer, no one really had the additional educational requirement. So, I guess whether I liked it or not, I was kind of recommended for that position. So, I shortly became Finance Director. But I'll never forget the fact that very early on in the accounting office, I had an individual who was the clerical person. And the first thing she said to me was, "Look, all I do in this office is pay the bills. If anything comes across that has anything to do other than paying an invoice, it's on you." And I got that, you know, notice very early on. So, I mean, I really feel as though, although it's different in a smaller town versus, you know, a city, no question.
Right.
You know, I've been in a position for the better part of the last eight years to, you know, roll up my sleeves and get in the trenches. Fortunately, at the moment, I have an individual there who aspires to bigger and better things also, and has been going to UMass and attempting to get the education credits for eventual certification and so on. So, I do have a little more help in that regard. But when I started, other than paying the invoice, which by the way, when she was on vacation, I had to figure out how to do it anyway. So, I essentially had it, had to do it all in the town of Palmer. I can't make that statement in the other communities, but in Palmer, that was certainly the case.
Thank you.
I had a question. When we talked a few weeks ago, we didn't actually discuss the auditors or anything like that. So, I was hoping you could describe your relationship with your auditors and discuss any response that you've had to any audit findings or management comments and things like that.
Sure. Well, our auditor is Tom Scanlon and Associates. I'm sure he's, I know he's not the auditor for your town presently, but he's not too far down the road over in Deerfield, and he's been our auditor for some time. He's, I learned a lot from Tom and his people, but they've always been, you know, ready to come by and force. They'd usually come in and when we're, after we've closed and we're ready for the audit, they'd usually come in with about four or five people and get everything done, usually in about a week, week and a half, and then move on to the school department. So, they generally were there for probably no more than two weeks at a time, but they were very thorough. Each person in that particular firm had their own area of expertise. I mean, we receive community development funds, so we have single audit issued in addition to the financial statements. And, you know, the police department gets federal money as well as the school, and that all needs to be reported, certainly if you meet the various thresholds. As far as findings, you know, we never really had any material weaknesses or whatever. We'd get a management letter issued every year. Some of the things that might be in something like that would be, gee, we tested some of your payables, and they, a few of them might have been 45 days instead of 30 days or something along those lines. But certainly, nothing that would prompt any issues. We've always had the lead time items well under control. Sometimes some of the things holding up the issuance of the audit is if you get your letter back from your attorneys in terms of any pending or threatened litigation. Sometimes that can take a little while to pull together. The other thing is, oh, boy, you better make sure you get that OPEB study going, because every two years, you're going to need that, and that could compromise your ability to prepare the government-wide statements, and that needs to be kept up to date. So, you know, it's, I mean, I'm busy all the time over there. I don't want to create the impression that, you know, we get this work done, and we're sitting around with our feet up on the desk the rest of the time, because that doesn't happen at all. But it's work that I've done for years. I enjoy it, and like any other thing, if you enjoy your work, then, you know, it's something you actually look forward to doing. I also had the benefit in Palmer to working with some really great people. And the people that were there were friendly. If there was an issue, they'd pull together, and you'd solve a problem as, you know, a joint effort as opposed to people running and hiding if you had a question. And we've got, you know, we had a good relationship with the auditors so that we could pick up the phone and ask a question if we needed a clarification on whatever matter happened to be the topic of the day. The people at DOR, I think my field representative, Dave Guzman, is the same field rep you folks have here. So, we have a good rapport with DOR and the people there. My first field rep, when I first started in Palmer, was the person that's now in charge of the whole department in Springfield. And, boy, she really held my feet to the fire, so I dot all the i's and cross all the t's and had everything done just perfectly so that, you know, that was a great experience, because talk about, you know, learning, you know, under fire a little bit. That was a terrific way to really get up to speed in a hurry. So, I mean, you probably know who I'm talking about. Deb Wagner is the individual. And if anyone's ever had any experience with Deb, you know she's a stickler for detail. And if you can get your balance sheet approved by Deb Wagner, then you know you got a pretty solid balance sheet. So, you know, that's, that was my, one of my first experiences.
I have a question. You touched on it a little bit, but I was wondering if you could expand a little on what your management style is and working with department heads and your staff or their style?
Oh, yeah. Well, my management style's always been a team effort. I always felt that you're only as good as the people you have working for you if you're in a large situation. And in terms of, you know, solving a problem, I mean, you're not going to know everything. I remember my mother used to tell me when I was growing up, "If you don't know, find out." I mean, it was just that simple, you know? She's not going to tell you the answer. She's just going to tell you to go find out. And so, that's stuck all these years, and if you don't know something, there's ways to, you know, track people down, whether it's through the people at DOR or your auditor or your own staff, that if you have a reconciliation issue, whether it be for receivables or cash, then you go to your treasurer or your collector, and you see what's going through on their side, and you know what's running through the general ledger, and you find the reconciling items, and you make it work. But it takes a team to be able to do that. It's difficult to do that without the full cooperation of everyone. So, I think it's important to foster good relationships. I always felt as though the last thing you want to do is be in a situation where you drag yourself out of bed in the morning and say, "Oh, no, I got to go into that place again." You know, you just don't want to create an environment that people feel like that. So, if you can avoid that situation, that's, you're already 90% way ahead of the game. The rest of it just is a little hard work and rolling up your sleeves.
Yeah, ahead.
I don't know accounting, okay? But I want to thank you for coming to Hatfield, applying for this position. I've read your resume. It's very impressive. I was very happy to hear words, Schedule A, tax recap, you know, these are words we like to hear from people with understanding and knowledge. My only question I have is, how familiar are you with VADA and?
Not very. I'm more familiar with Munis, which I've worked with in a number of communities. So, VADA would be a little bit of a new experience. But, you know, the first thing would be, first thing on your day, well, okay, let's figure out how to prepare a journal entry. And then let's figure out how to get the, you know, the reports out that you need in terms of expenditures and revenues and the type of reporting that I'm sure everyone here expects to see every month and done on a timely basis. So, that part of it would be a little bit of an education. But on the other hand, like I said, after eight years in Palmer, things begin to get a little redundant, and, you know, you're always looking for new experiences. So, I wouldn't get too concerned about being able to figure it out, because all of these electronic general ledgers, you know, work, you know, pretty much the same way. You still have a balance sheet, you still have an income statement, you still have the various funds set up, and it's a question of manipulating within the Windows-driven system or the menu-driven system to get to the right place to get what you're looking for.
And I'm very happy to hear that you're a municipal accountant. So, that's a big thing.
Just a question sort of related to what you said, I guess, about, you know, new challenges. So, Hatfield may have some challenges, and I was just wondering if you're in any way familiar, if there was any conversation about the sort of challenging situation that we find ourselves in, and how you feel about that?
Well, I know you have a accounting firm, I guess. Is it based at?
Correct, municipal.
Municipal accounting, and I think they're based somewhere north of Boston, aren't they, in terms of their home office?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't know how that works long distance. I suspect they're not here full-time. I suspect you're looking for something that is a little more here and available on a regular basis, which is exactly what the role of Town Accountant and Finance Director typically does. I certainly would like to meet with the principal of that firm or whoever is, has been on-site here to go over a little bit in terms of where things presently stand. I mean, have you, have you closed the year? Have you got your free cash certified? Did you get your tax rate settled? You know, the Schedule As on deck, has that been filed? That's the type of thing that I'd be, you know, quizzing the individual about. And usually, there's a professional courtesy within the industry to provide accountants with work papers and so on, so that you don't start on day one reinventing the wheel right from scratch. So, you know, as I say, I've been there, done that, not in this particular circumstance, obviously, but I've been doing it long enough so that not too many things surprise me anymore.
Well, and how, I mean, to be blunt, we are not closed, and probably in all likelihood are not going to be closed by the time January 1 begins, which could present a challenge, you know? And I hope that doesn't scare you, but, you know, I mean, that's the honesty of the situation. And, you know, we haven't filed Schedule A. We don't have free cash. I think we're getting close on the recap.
We should, we should be able to get the recap submitted by tomorrow or early next week.
So, your challenge, not only in acclimating to a new town and new position, is going to be helping close 19, make sure 20's on track, and of course, we're, you know, by the beginning of the year, we're starting to think about 21 and budgeting for 21. So, I mean, not to lay it out too thick, but...
Well, that's certainly a challenge. I mean, you weren't close for 18, right?
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes, yeah.
It was touch and go. It's a long, you know, there's a long history of a variety of things that happened, including probably some amount of understaffing, you know, historically.
Yeah, well, that's how it gets away from communities, is if things are understaffed. And of course, before you can even work on all these things, you got to make sure that the daily stuff is happening. You got to make sure that the receipts are posted in a timely manner. You got to make sure the bills are paid, or all those reports you generate at the end of the month are meaningless. So, the focus really is on the day-to-day stuff. And then once you get that under control, then maybe you can move on to the month-to-month stuff, close the months. And then you get to the other grander plan here, which is things like we talked about, get your tax recap going, get your balance sheet filed, and...
We put a lot of resources into sort of that redoing that day-to-day for a period now.
But I'm happy to hear you say that you're close on your tax recap, because I've always felt, look, as long as you get the tax bills out and you can keep the revenue stream going, there's no other problem that you can, that you can't solve. But, you know, it takes some cooperation and time, effort, and energy out of everybody. So, does it scare me off? Well, it doesn't surprise me. I don't think it scares me off.
Right. And again, I didn't say it to scare, but I, you know...
No, it's fair. I think, I think the other piece of that, too, is that we are, we are also committed and have been committed over time to fixing it and to getting adequate resources to fix it. So, we're not expecting to, you know, bring somebody in, bring in three-quarters of what we need and have someone fix it. You know, we're, we're committed to doing what we have to do to make sure the resources are in place to get it done.
Absolutely.
John, what do you think might be some of the interesting opportunities for you here in Hatfield? Any ideas?
Well, certainly to get to know the people and all the departments, because they all play a role in the budgeting process, as you well know. I don't know what your procedure is for developing that with the Finance Committee. I suspect you must at some point ask the department heads to submit some sort of a budget, and you probably meet with them to go over their requests. I think you also have CPA funds here, right? I think you also have CPA funds here, right? That'd be a little bit of a new challenge for me. Every year that more people that sign up for that benefit, the plot keeps shrinking its reach, I think, in terms of what the communities derive out of that. But it's still certainly a noble undertaking to continue that and to use those funds for things that benefit the community. So I certainly look forward to the opportunity to participate on that side of it as well. Primarily the budget preparation takes place with your finance committee, I would presume. I don't know how far along you are on that. We started the process already in Palmer. Personally, I think it's a little premature because we don't submit it to the town council until March 1st. You do have a different form of government. In Palmer, we have a city form of government, even though we're a town. And by that, I mean we have a town council as opposed to your annual town meeting and, I know, you might have a...
In May.
Yeah, okay, and you might have an interim town meeting.
If something comes up.
If something crops up.
We try not to.
We try not to, but we may.
Yeah, okay. And then as far as the articles that are put together, I would guess the select board's pretty involved with the moderator in terms of putting together articles that are gonna go before the voters.
We are, and of course, if it's a financial aspect to it at all, we work with the finance committee as well. So it's kind of a combined team.
We have a capital planning committee, too. Works on that side of it. Both immediate needs, but projecting out, long-term.
Very good.
When typically, I mean, in the past few years in Palmer, have you, do you close your year-end typically?
Well, probably in the month of, ideally in September. Usually, it might go into October. And then, you know, we'll have the, then once we do that, you know, we're often running with the balance sheet reporting.
Right.
And it could be better. One of the things we wanted to add was a purchasing module. And what hangs us up in the months of July and August are the encumbrances. And it's manual and we're chasing it. And we can't really button things down until we can encumber the residual balances from the prior year. And if we had the purchasing module that we've been trying to get, we'd find that a lot of that stuff would be automatic and you wouldn't be spending a lot of time doing something that's, you know, manual when in this day and age, there's better ways to do things. So I don't know if your VEDAR includes a purchasing module.
Do you know it?
We don't have it at this point in time, but it can. You can get a module to add to it.
See, the other thing that I think you have here is, I'm guessing the transactions are probably a half, maybe even a third of what we see in terms of daily transactions in Palmer. And so from that standpoint, I think it would be manageable. Again, from the, you know, roll up your sleeves, get in the trenches type of thing.
The only thing that makes a little difference, you know, is that we're running our own school district without a business manager.
Well, that, yeah, that's an interesting challenge. I've had...
So it makes it about twice, you know what I mean? Twice what it would appear today.
And one of the challenges is the school, the software right now that the school is using is not compatible to VEDAR.
So they have their own separate software, separate chart of accounts. Who does their end-of-year report?
You do.
They outsource it to somebody who writes it, but then you also, they work with you.
They would work with you through it.
Okay, well, sounds like...
What is the annual budget in Palmer?
Probably somewhere between $38 and $40 million, including the school.
And the school in Palmer has a business manager?
Yes. They had a little turnover in business managers. One of the things we had in Palmer, Palmer, I think, has had its share of turnover for a lot of people seeking greener pastures in terms of compensation. We seem to be like the training ground for people that move on. But we've got some good people there presently. And that's, again, they're in a community that's, you know, fiscally challenged. Our bond rating, however, is close to a double A. It was just affirmed as a A1, a high A1 by Moody's. And we have excellent ratings with respect to our financial controls and so on. The shortcoming that kept us off from achieving a double A status was the tax base. It hasn't quite grown as rapidly as, you know, the people at Moody's would like to see it in order to qualify as a double A-rated community. So, you know, they have their challenges. And one of the reasons is to, you know, watch every nickel and keep the budgets as tight as possible. And we've been able to do that. I should point out that when I started in 2011, our free cash was less than $700,000. It's now over $3 million with steady improvements over the last eight years. So somewhere along the line, something correct has been happening. And I guess I can lay claim to at least some of that credit having served in the position I did. So I hope that answers the question.
Did anybody have another question or comment?
Did we, is it, is it fair to ask, you know, potential start dates? If, you know, what you're thinking about?
Sure.
Well, yeah, the, you know, there's obviously ongoing things in Palmer that I'd kind of like to wrap up.
Absolutely.
And I think I threw out the other day at the initial meeting that sometimes you'd like to consider giving a week's notice for every year that you worked. In my case, that'd be like eight weeks. You know, I think I could probably get away with a four-week notice. Keeping in mind, though, this is a difficult time of year to be giving an employer a four-week notice with all the holidays that we have coming up. So, you know, that's something that I guess I'd have to, you know, give my present employer the courtesy of, you know, a discussion and come up with a plan that would, you know, serve the purpose because the community's been very good to me over the years. And both Charlie Blanchard, my former town manager who just recently retired, as well as Ryan McNutt have been, you know, terrific to work for. So, you know, I feel as though I owe them that courtesy.
I think we would all agree, actually, and would hope if we were Palmer, you know, that would be a consideration as well.
And the other part of my reason for asking is, you know, if it's, say, the middle of January, you know, whatever that date might be, if we decide that this is the route we're gonna go, then it gives us an idea, you know, we need to know, do we need somebody in the interim to help us? Because if we have a drop dead date of December 31st from Bay State and we don't have somebody coming in for some amount of time after that, we've got, we can't just stop for 15, you know, for that interim period. So that's why I asked the question.
Oh, that's fair. I think it's good for all of us to have an idea as well.
Yeah, thank you.
In general, so thank you. Anybody else have a question or comment? Well, I'd like to thank you, John, for coming tonight and meeting, meeting everybody and seeing some of us again.
My pleasure.
Yeah, it was, I found it very informative and personally, I'm sure I speak for everybody. And to Ed's point, I'm the same way. I don't know much about accounting, but I certainly have picked up on some buzzwords over the last few years, being on the Board of Selectmen's, you know, Schedule A and other things like that. And certainly with somebody with municipal accounting background is exactly what we're, our goal is, as well as the background in, as a financial director. Obviously, we know there's the day-to-day accounting as when I opened my little spiel. But we're also looking to the future of, you know, we water, you know, water systems, sewer systems, everything else, facilities, you know? And we're looking for somebody with that background to help guide us and to lead us to making some decisions down the road on behalf of the residents of Hatfield. So it was nice to not only read about, but to hear the background from you directly.
Great, well, thank you for the opportunity. And I'm looking forward to continuing this discussion at some point. So again, thank you for inviting me back here tonight. And hopefully, everything will play out that works out for everyone.
Did you have any questions for us?
Well, we kind of discussed the main ones, and that is kind of getting up to speed, the issue relative to meeting with your auditors. They're the ones that probably can provide me with the most insight of exactly where things stand. I'd probably be able to get some of their work papers. And I'd have to get started pretty quick, learning the ins and outs of VEDAR. So those are the takeaways that I have. But as I say, with a career that expands probably at this point close to 30 years on municipal government in general, between Rhode Island and Massachusetts, there's probably nothing that I haven't seen before, or at least similar.
Well.
So, you know, that's, I guess, gives me some idea what to expect and hopefully provides some reassurance to you folks that at least I have some idea what I'd be doing. So anyway, thank you again for the chance to talk to everybody.
Oh, before you get off your microphone, so you can pull...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you. I was just gonna ask John Novak if, we're just gonna take a break while our guest unwires himself, unplugs himself. All right, thank you very much. We'd like to welcome everybody back to the meeting of November 21st. We just finished a meeting with the finance committee and candidate for the financial director slash town accountant. But now we have some Board of Selectmen business to take care of. So Marlene, the next topic was regarding the holiday schedule for Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year's. I think that traditionally the Board has approved the day after, the Friday after Thanksgiving as a day, as a town-wide holiday or day off. So I'll make a motion that the Friday after Thanksgiving be granted to town employees as a day off?
For this year.
For this year, yeah.
You'll make, you made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made, seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and also there was talk about Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve in perhaps granting half-days on either, on both of those to town employees.
I will make a motion that we grant a half-day on both Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve to town employees for this year.
Okay, so motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, thank you. All right, appointment to the Fire Chief Screening Committee. This is sort of on me. Fran Gutten and I had exchanged numerous, not numerous, but some emails and some texts. And I misunderstood one of them, which I thought he was agreeing to be on the Fire Chief Screening Committee when in fact he was saying he would like to do that, but he's in the midst of doing the superintendent's, helping with the superintendent search for Smith Academy. So I guess I didn't read that second part of his message to me. So Fran's unable to be part of that screening committee. But Jeff Boyle has expressed an interest in being on the Fire Chief Screening Committee. So we'd be looking tonight to make it official, if my colleagues are so willing, to appoint Jeff Boyle as a member of the Fire Chief Screening Committee. And we did, Marlene did have a conversation with Jeff. Just, you know, again, we try not to appoint people to committees that they don't, they aren't aware of coming, even though I did it to Fran. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Jeff to the Fire Screening, Fire Chief Screening Committee?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so a motion's made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion's made and seconded to appoint Jeff Boyle to be a member of the Fire Chief Screening Committee. All those in favor? Aye, thank you. And then lastly for tonight, we have a change order request related to the Town Hall Phase 2 building improvements. The amount is for $11,583.97. It's a change order. And it has to do with some changes that had taken place downstairs, I believe, but I'll...
Yeah, piping changes. Basically, I know buildings, when you open up, dig up floors, there's things that happen. So when they were digging the pit, there was some pipes that were all corroded. And I saw them, they were all bust, they were not just eaten away. So some of that is the change of those pipes, adding some stuff. So basically, it's common stuff you come across. It's part of the contingency, so it's for $11,583. It also includes some money we're getting back for things that we're not doing. So that's...
And it's all funded through the contingency.
Right, it's all funded through the contingency. I'll make a motion to approve the change order number one for $11,583.97.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. Marlene, is there anything under, or my colleagues, anything under anticipated new business for tonight?
I do not have anything.
Okay, great. So everybody, happy Thanksgiving and thanks for tuning in. And John Novak, thank you very much. Is there a motion to...
I'll make a motion re-adjourn.
Oh, I'll second that one.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor? Aye, thank you.
Thank you, John.